7th has been called to order via, I don't know if Marlene, do they look for anything official for us to say? You know, via virtual Zoom meeting for our notes or for our records?
Uh, this, yes, via Zoom webinar.
Okay, via Zoom webinar. Okay. So I actually have the information in front of me. So let's, the meeting's been called to order. Are there any announcements? That anybody on the board would like to make?
I do have a couple, if that's okay.
Of course.
Um, so I'm, pardon me because I'm looking at my Facebook. There is the, there's a Hatfield Egg Hunt that has been organized. It's a Facebook event. It's been organized by Kristy Boudreaux, who is, I believe, the mom of a preschooler. And if you're on, if you're a, if you're on Facebook, um, I think if you go, if you searched Hatfield Egg Hunt, it would come up. And there's some details, but basically for two weeks in April, she's asking people, anybody, families, anyone from town, any resident, to decorate some type of Easter egg and put it either on their house or stuck on their lawn. And then families can drive around with their kids to try to find the eggs, which is kind of fun under the circumstances, trying to figure out a way to maybe do a little bit of an Easter egg hunt. So, um, there is information on, on Facebook about that. Um, and I know, I want to say her address is 83 Main Street. And I know she had some eggs out there, some like cardboard or wooden cutouts that people were welcome to take to be able to decorate an egg. So that's kind of fun. And then the other event I wanted to mention, I was contacted by Patty Hens and her and her husband, John Hens, have come up with this idea, they're calling it Light Unites Us, and it's illuminating Hatfield on Saturday, April 18th at 7:00 PM. If people want to place a candle on their front driveway, on their sidewalk, on their porch, as long as they pick a safe receptacle to do that, um, around 7 o'clock, um, they'd like to sort of illuminate Hatfield, sort of a play on the luminaryum. Um, you know, there can't be, um, you know, various religious services this time of year for Easter or Passover. So they were thinking that it might be a nice way for Hatfield to do one thing. Um, and again, they'll encourage people to drive around that evening, um, April 18th, 7 o'clock and look for the lights. People can use Christmas lights out front or some type of candle or safe luminaria for that. So I thought those were two really nice events that townspeople have proposed at this time when it's really hard to do anything as a community. That's it.
Very nice.
Thanks, Diana. Yeah, those are two, actually, I've seen the, uh, the eggs around town when we're out and about, and I think that's great about, you know, the lights. I didn't realize that was generated from the Henses, so that, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yes, I want to give them credit for that because Patty called me over the weekend with that idea. And, uh, we worked together to get a little thing put together and out on Facebook. So we're trying to, uh, spread the word as much as possible.
Yeah, Spring Luminaryum, I like it. Ed, did you have anything to, um, under announcements?
Oh, I'm good. I'm good.
Marle, I, I have something, but Marlene, did you have anything you wanted to? I was, I was gonna update the community, so I don't know if, if.
Okay, I, and, and all I was gonna say is that, you know, the town continues to post Mima's daily reports on the town's website.
Yeah, and, yes, and, and to echo that, and I just want to publicly thank, you know, my fellow board members and, and Marlene, but the, um, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and, um, the, uh, the Board of Health. The Board of Health as a whole, and Carrie Flaherty in particular, has really, um, been like a full-time job now, uh, working with the schools, working with other departments, working with the states. So I just wanted to publicly thank all those groups and organizations for everything you've been doing for us and keeping us, um, in the know as, as things change. Um, I'm sure, well, hopefully, if people are signed up for it, we did send out, um, the Bob, who, who's not only the Fire Chief, but is Emergency Management Director, uh, we're sending out the Monday updates via Code Red, uh, for, for the residents to just give you whatever updates we have. Most of the information remains the same, which basically is Hatfield, town, town, uh, buildings, uh, the parks, you know, the restaurants. Unfortunately, everything's closed. You know, the, the edict is to stay home unless you really have to go out and continue to social distance from people. We, we just want to try to get over the hump here. So, um, that, that's really all, all I had. I don't know if anybody, any of my board members have any questions or, yeah, Diana, go ahead.
I would just add a couple, a couple of things to that. Again, I want to echo, um, the thanks to all of those people and especially Carrie, because you're right, Carrie's, um, really just doing a tremendous job under really unusual circumstances, so we thank her. But I also, I want to add that I have been getting phone calls from people who are still seeing kids out playing, um, together. They're together, they're riding bikes or they're doing things, and it's really upsetting other town residents. So I guess I would just ask that parents really make sure that they're, um, you know, having their children follow the same rules that we all need to follow, um, uh, in terms of social distancing, no playdates, no basketball games, any of this kind of stuff. So just know that it is upsetting other, um, residents to see that.
Yeah, thank you. We, you know, and, and we get it. People are, people are enjoying the, the nice weather we've had the last couple of days and a few days last week. And we know people want to get out, but it, you know, and, and that's fine. It's just, we, we just need to keep the distance, you know. Uh, uh, all the age groups just need to keep the distance from, from other folks just because we don't know. We don't know who's asymptomatic. We don't know who has or hasn't, you know, really been exposed. So why take a chance? Everyone just kind of lay low. And I, I know it's difficult, but, you know, go out in your backyard and do what you need to to get a little exercise, a little sunshine, so. All right, uh, any other announcements? Okay, so Bob, can you tell, do we have any, um, is there anybody from the public here? Now, now would be the time that we would ask for any public input, uh, if anybody had any questions or comments, or actually comments.
So right now, we are showing that you have, uh, four attendees, one being the community television, Sharon is one.
Yeah.
There is a David and a David Hewlings.
Okay, so if any of, um, i- if any of the public has any, uh, comments they'd like to state, please do so now. We'll give you a second in case you're muted and you need to unmute or something. Okay, so, um.
Uh, do I need to do anything?
Nope. I actually just unmuted both of them. It may take a few seconds just for them to kick over, but they are allowed to speak if they have anything.
Okay, so, um, I, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I know we need to give a little time because we're all kind of logging in virtual, you know, remotely, so. I'm showing both, both, um, both community members are still showing muted microphones, so I'm, I'm gonna continue with the meeting. If for some reason it becomes unmuted, certainly they, they have the opportunity over the next few minutes to let us know, and, and they can certainly ma- make their comments now. Okay, so thanks, Bob.
Sure.
Um, but we have approval of minutes. We, we have some sets of minutes, um, that we were sent electronically. If, uh, anybody has a question or, or wants to go through those or make a motion to approve or, and accept those.
Well, there's, I just have one comment on.
Sure.
March 3rd, 2020. It's about one, two, three, four paragraphs down. It says, Selectman Jaworski said Huntington Road and Hadley was the original crossing to the bridge. That should be Ed Weschel said that Huntington Road and Hadley should be the original crossing to the bridge. And that's the only comment I have on all the minutes that I have in front of me.
Okay, so, um, with, with that amendment, is there a motion for the March 3rd, 20, to accept the March 3rd, 2020 minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the March 3rd, 2020 minutes.
As amended? Okay, uh, motions made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, we also have minutes from March 16th, October 9th, September 25th. So there's three additional sets of minutes. If we can either do them individually, if anybody has any questions, or if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the March 16th, the October 9th of 2019, in September 25th of 2019, please do so.
I'll make a motion to accept all three of those sets of minutes.
Okay, motions, sorry, motion made and seconded? Okay, uh, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay.
Aye.
So Marlene, this is where I'm gonna need your help. I cannot find the document with the actual agenda on it. So.
Okay.
And we're, we're just gonna go in order, I would imagine, so.
Okay, yeah, that should have been the first page of the, the packet that I had sent.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm actually looking at Key's email that has all the documents attached to it.
Okay.
So.
So the first topic was any information relative to COVID-19.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I think that's been covered.
I think so.
And, and, and I'd just like to add that if, if any of the residents have questions about, you know, doing business with the town, please contact my office or as well as, as the town clerk's office, and we'll certainly be glad to help them out.
Right, so, so thank you, Marlene. So what Marlene's saying is if you have any town business you have a question about, that call can go to Marlene or the town clerk. If it's anything actually to do with COVID-19 or any information you need from that, it should go to the Board of Health. Correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to clarify, I don't want you to have to answer questions that are related to them, okay?
Right, yes, any, any questions really that are specifically for, for Board of Health, they should be contacting the Board of Health. But I, I, as I was just saying, that I understand that the town hall is not open to the general public, and, you know, people want to know how to get information or how to, you know, contact an office and person. Certainly, they can, um, access the town's website. Office information is, is posted.
Yeah, and, and our, our staff is checking their, um, their voicemail as well, if you leave them a voice message.
And we should recognize that they're working under very unusual circumstances.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And we really appreciate that they're, uh, keeping everything going.
Yes, thank you, Diana. Um, I, I should have said that earlier, and, and I agree. And, you know, and just think of what everybody's going through at home. Um, you know, these people are, are, are coming into work every day because we still have a town to run, um, regardless of, of our surroundings and what's happening around us given the circumstances. So, yeah, I, I echo, um, what Diana said, Mar- and Marlene, I include you in that, of course.
Yes, absolutely, Marlene.
Marlene, the front office, the clerks, the DPW, yeah, you know, all of those folks that continue to, uh, to do what's necessary to keep Hatfield moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, you're welcome. Topic two is, uh, discussion with the town clerk, and she is here in my office, she was not able to, to access the link, so I'm going to step out of my seat and she will sit down here.
Oh, okay.
I know she would like to talk to the Board of Selectmen about, um, the possibility of postponing the town's annual election. And then we can also have a discussion about, and, and even, we could defer it to our April. We're gonna have a meeting on April 21st. I did have a conversation with, with Ed earlier. I haven't had a chance to relay that information to Diana. But, um, we're going to set up a, a virtual meeting, the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee, with representatives from Melonson Heath, who we are, um, using for accounting services. But anyway, um, at that, that meeting on the 21st, we could maybe have a discussion about delaying annual town meeting. So I'm gonna turn my seat over to the town clerk.
Okay, well, while they switch the camera around, just, you know, as Lydia's getting situated. So I, I think we would agree, and, and those that are watching this or will be watching this, you know, it, it's the first week of April. We're scheduled for a town meeting and, and election, general election in the next four to five weeks. And I, I would think we would all agree that with everything that's going on, we're, it's just too soon to know where we're gonna stand at that point. So, uh, having, having said that, I, I would suggest, uh, to my fellow members, and, and I think Lydia's gonna get into this, but that we at least, tonight, we at least postpone town meeting and the election and, and look to tentatively at least schedule those for June. Uh, maybe not pick a date tonight unless Lydia has something in mind, but leave it a little flexible because we really don't know when this is gonna start, um, settling down. And, you know, when you watch the reports and you hear that Massachusetts isn't expected to really peak with the virus for another month or two, maybe, uh, hopefully sooner. Uh, I'd rather ultimately pick one date if we could. That's, that's gonna be pretty safe to select at the time, if you know what I mean. So I think tonight we should push out town meeting and the election out of May and, and maybe regroup for, for those purposes the first week of May or the second week to decide, are we gonna be able to pull this off one or both in June type of thing? So, um, that's where, that's where I'm coming from. We can discuss that or let Lydia have her conversation first and, and see what you think.
I'm, I'm here, I don't know if you can see me?
Yeah, we can see you waving, yeah.
I'm trying to stand six feet away.
Thank you for coming in. I know you've got a lot on your plate right now, so.
Thank you. So I, I agree that we should be moving the election. Of course, I don't have as much of time as you do for town meeting because that can go past June 30th. So I've got a few weeks, but I'd like to set the date earlier than what you're proposing, first part of May or, or the second week in May, because the state has opened up early voting by mail to municipal elections, so that, um, I'd like as much time as possible to get the word out so that people don't necessarily have to come to the polls. They could access an online application for an early voting ballot, which will actually be an absentee ballot, but in an early voting envelope, and then get as many people as possible to do it by mail. Because probably the latest I'd be looking at is possibly June 23rd for an election.
And may, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So let's, let's just say hypothetically, let's just say that we, we decide, whether, you know, tonight or in the very near future, that, that seems to make sense to go for June 23rd. And then we get to be, I don't know, June, June 1st or June 5th or whatever it is. And, and we still are under these kind of rules and regulations, but you would have already started early voting po- potentially. So here's my question, Lydia, can we pick the 23rd and then sort of, even if it's a week or two ahead of time, then push it out if necessary, given the circumstances?
I can't go past June 30th.
Oh, you can't at all? That's kind of.
Right, yeah, no, we, I got a wall. You don't, you, your legislation came down and you have, you are able to go past June 30th. They didn't change the legislation for the election.
Okay, so we're, we're still bound to that, is what you're saying, at this point?
Correct, as far as the election, any, and the election and town meeting don't have to go a week apart or together. They can be, you know, separate events, you just have to have a separate warrant.
Okay.
Before, yeah, I do, sorry.
All right.
So, yeah, no, I'm, I, you know, we can wait a, a, a couple, three weeks, you know.
Well, yeah, I don't know that that's gonna change anything. I mean, you're, if you're, if we're proposing the, the, basically, the third week, the end of June, the third week of June. There's not really much, you know, a week's not gonna make a difference to, uh, to move it out. I, I mean, if, if my colleagues are fine, or, or if you want to do it at our next meeting, that's fine. But I think June 23rd, about as far out as we can push it at this point, given that we're still bound to the regulations to have that election before June 30th.
Unless we wait a couple of weeks to see if anything changes. But at this point, June 30th is my.
Last day. If, if we were to, if we were to go forward and plan on June 23rd at this point, what, when do you start actually having printed materials approximately, printed materials with, with dates on them and things like that?
I would be, I would be ordering the ballots of around the 14th or 15th of April.
Of April?
Yeah, 15th of April.
For May, if we push it out?
No. It's only next week, Lydia.
Definitely next week.
Because once the, um, all the names are certified and they're back in the town clerk's office, then I can order ballots.
Well, you can, but when do you have to? Right, right.
Good, good question. I, I, I don't know.
Let, let, let's just do the math, right? If, if the election is normally the third week of May, and you can order, and you can order the stuff that.
On April 14th.
Two weeks, five, so like fi- a five-week lead time. So I would guess if, if the election is the, the 23rd of June, you probably, I would say, you might have a little later than this, but let's just say May 8th before.
But that's, that's when you have, like, for a town election, a handful of absentee ballots, maybe 12 absentee ballots for an annual town election. Now, we're talking maybe like eight or 900 people come out to vote for an annual town election. And I'm looking now at 600 absentee or early voting ballots to process. And, you know, get out there, get back in.
Yeah.
Process, I just, you know, and, and getting the word out, not everybody's on the computer.
Well, we also may have, at this point, I, I guess, we may have questions that need to be on that same ballot. Right?
Right, which you have to get to me by, what is it, would I say April 14th?
Yeah, it's on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, it's on tonight's agenda. The ballot question.
Right.
Those dates didn't change.
No, it just seems awfully early for what we, given the circumstances for what we're trying to, um, to do. I, I mean, I, I know, Diana or Ed, do you guys have a comment or a suggestion or?
Um. It's so hard to know because we don't know, you know, we're talking about the end of June. I mean, hopefully, things could have changed. Things will have started to turn the corner by then, um, but I, you know.
Unfortunately, the only thing, the only date that they, that went with extending your election was the date for the last day of voter registration. All the other dates stayed the same. So all the nomination papers were due back by March 31st. But all the other different dates connected with the election didn't change. The only thing they changed was the last day of voter registration.
But why is that a problem?
Well, because you were just saying you want more time to submit your question.
Well, I, I guess I just.
No, I wasn't talking about, just saying in general, like, setting the date and everything. It's, you know, but.
Yeah, no, I, I can, I can wait a little time. I just don't want to wait till the second week in May.
That's fair, that's, that's fine.
The election.
Right.
Can I ask? Is, is it, I'd like, I'd like it if we maybe decided this at our next meeting, but if, in the meantime, Lydia, you could get us an exact timeline of how things would have to, in other words, if we decided the next meeting that we're gonna have them on June 23rd, all of the dates that need to happen, when people would need, how that early voting works, all of that timeframe. Could you get us all of that by the next meeting?
When's the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And, and Lydia, do you think that, like, as, as we're having this conversation, do you think that maybe at the state level, the whole process wasn't thought out? They kind of said, we know we can't vote in May, probably, because of what's happening. So they pushed, they said you can push out the election, but they never thought of saying, oh, well, if we're, we don't want to have, I mean, what you're saying is almost like half, people could start voting in May, right? For, for a June 23rd election.
That's the, that's the way I was, I was reading it.
Yeah.
You know, you're right, I, you know, I'm, I'm sure things were done very, very quickly.
Sure.
Um, you know, and, and, you know, I don't know, I can't.
Did the best of intentions.
Right, exactly, exactly. Everybody had the best of intentions, but, you know.
Do, do you think, do you think that that's something that, um, maybe we, and by we, I'm, I'm asking you, um, like, is, like, the, the head, um, voter or registrar or election official or something and say, hey, is, is, are you guys looking to change this to move everything out? Or is it everything staying the same except the actual voting day can be moved out? And, and maybe they just, like I said, maybe they just didn't think of the whole process with early voting and.
Yeah, I can, I can double check all the, you know, they frequently ask questions, although I looked at that and I didn't really see anything, you know, relating to any other dates except for the last day of voter registration, so.
Sure, I, I, I think that I'm, I, I, and we can certainly wrap it all up at, at our next meeting, but I, I hear what you're saying, and i- if at this point it has to stay in June, I think we should at least tentatively think that June 23rd will be the date. Now that we're having the conversation, but let's, let's find out to Diana's point, how we get along the, you know, what's necessary to get us there, maybe.
You, you don't, you don't have to, um, actually postpone. You can postpone it without a date, so at least it's postponed.
Okay.
Or, or, you know, moved.
You need an official vote for that?
Yeah, so, so that way it's definitely not May 19th.
Okay.
So.
Would one of my colleagues be willing to make that motion and we'll?
I've got a, I've got a motion, I've got a motion right here.
Okay.
So if I read it.
Yeah, well, yes.
And then someone says, so moved.
Correct.
Um, I moved that pursuant to Section 1 of Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, and because of the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the annual town election scheduled for May 19th, 2020, is postponed to a future date to be determined at the next or later town, later Selectmen's meeting.
So Ed, are you gonna move, are you gonna make that motion?
Go ahead, Diana.
Do you want me to mo- make it? I'll, I'll make that motion.
Just say so moved.
So moved.
All right, so the motion's been ma- so Diana made the motion, thank you, Lydia. Ed seconded it. Is there any further discussion?
No, I, I think you've covered it. We can wait to not screw anything up, but we can wait long, because they're changing on a daily basis. And so if we can wait to the next meeting and get more information, then the better. We're, it, it might have, have different changes by then.
Right, okay, thank you.
Ed, that's an excellent point. I mean, things are changing.
Yeah.
So quickly. And in the meantime, Lydia, what I think would be useful to bring to that meeting is sort of that, that back it up from there. So if we're having it June 23rd, what the, what the voters of Hatfield would need to know backtracked from.
Okay, the other, the other motion I'd like you to make, um, because.
Well, we didn't vote on this one yet, so.
Sorry.
That's all right. Uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great, thanks. Go ahead, Lydia, please.
Okay, we moved the voting location to the safety complex because of the construction. So now I'd like you to, I moved that the voting location for the town of Hatfield will be moved back to the Town Hall, 59 Main Street.
So moved.
Motion, motion's made and seconded to move the voting location back to where we normally do it, which is Town Hall. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'd be good to be back home.
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Thanks, Lydia, is there anything else?
I think I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
So, um, a- along those lines, I did have a conversation with Joe LaValle, our town moderator today, um, just, um, that Lydia was coming in and, and he had seen the agenda, just that we would be having a conversation regarding the, the election itself. And, uh, Lydia alluded to this too, that the, the town meeting and the election don't necessarily have to go hand in hand legally, although they do normally because of questions in vote, you know, all, we all know what the deal is. So, um, at, at this point, Joe didn't really have a date. I, I think that he and I sort of tentatively talked about maybe a week bef- would the town meeting at this point might be a week before, so somewhere in the beginning or middle of June, you know, on a Tuesday. But if, depending on the circumstances of our environment, of, of, of our, our, of our town and the state and, and the country, and the world for that matter, it could be a town meeting where we just, before the end of June, take care of some absolutely have-to type things that departments need or departments want, or we, or budgets, or, you know, whatever we have to do. It might not be the full-blown town meeting where we have our 30 to 40 articles. It, it might have five, it might have eight. It might not be the full-blown town meeting where we have our thirty to forty articles. It, it might have five. It might have eight. It might have whatever we need to keep the town moving forward. And then in the fall, the, you know, theoretically, that's when we would regroup and, and, and wrap up whatever we didn't do in June. So I just wanted to put that out there to you guys and to the public who, whoever's seen this, that, you know, same as Lydia, the, the intention is to still do things in June, but it just might be kind of tapered down a little bit from a, from a town meeting perspective. And of course, Joe doesn't have the same restrictions of early voting and printing ballots and things like that. So the, the town meeting itself's got a little more flexibility as far as movement goes, as far as dates. So that's all I had on that. If you have any questions, you, you certainly, any of you can ask Joe himself, but I did ask if he wanted me to just sort of mention it under, knowing that we were going to be talking about the election. So Joe's aware that I was going to make these comments.
I think what that accomplishes too is it encourages as many people as possible to participate in the real, some of the meat of the town meeting if we delay it, because I'm not sure that even if, even if we're allowed at that point to have gatherings of seventy-five people or more, seventy-five people being the quorum at town meeting.
Right.
It's a matter of if people are comfortable coming. And so if we can, you know, delay it until, you know, people really feel comfortable coming, then you maximize the participation and that's obviously something we want to encourage, so.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Could I just mention one thing?
Yep.
I also have had a, a brief discussion with the Treasurer Collector's Office, a provision under the Act to provide support to municipalities. The board, provided the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize delaying or postponing the due date for real estate taxes. I have had some communication with the Assistant Treasurer Collector, and she has recommended that, that's something we consider.
So is it possible to have them, I mean, it would be nice if people paid them who could pay them, but if people who needed an extension could get an extension. So I, I wonder if there's a way we can word it that they'll go out, they'll be due as usual, but-
They have gone out. They've been mailed.
Okay. So understanding the circumstances, when did they get mailed?
Actually, no, I'm thinking water and sewer. I thought-
Water and sewer, water and sewer were mailed out and the actual, you were talking about real estate taxes, right, Marlene?
Correct.
Those, those came out like six months ago as, you know, we got a both-
Right, but they're, they're due May first, right?
Right, but, but we, the taxes were sent out with, with last year, you know, we got two, two, two sets of them, I guess, for, for lack of a better term. So two, two sets of taxes, one for the end of last year and one for, for this, for this time of year. So it's not a new mailing, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right, right.
Everyone already has those.
I, I mean, I think we should, we should always encourage people to pay those taxes on time, but I think we have to, you know, particularly, people have mortgages, it gets paid by the bank anyway, all of that sort of stuff. But I mean, I think that we should encourage people to pay them on time, but if, you know, maybe not have fees or anything like that for people that need an extension under the circumstances.
I, I would agree with that too, because the, the revenue is important to, to the town, obviously. And, but I, I, I do think that, given circumstances, which is really, it, it's probably just a larger magnitude of it, but it's no different than in the past when people would call the Collector's Office, Treasurer's Office, whatever kind of bill they had to, to, to make an arrangement if, if that was necessary. So I'm not sure it was, I see Sharon's on now. Was, was it something that we're looking to just carte blanche do them all? Marlene, I'm sorry. Like, what was the?
Yes, there are three, three steps.
Yeah, I, 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 I would agree. I, I understand the intention and, and, but I, I do think that I agree with, with Diana's comments and statements. So it's not trying to not be sympathetic or empathetic to people's needs and because, you know, we, we all have them, we all have different ones. But I, I think those that are able to pay, you know, will continue to do so, and, and those that, that have to make arrangements can do that as well with the office. I mean, that, that's how I would look at it personally.
Yeah. And, and in all fairness to the board, this was not already on the agenda or none, neither of you had expected to have a conversation about. This is just something that just came up.
Sure.
Since post, since post, posting the meeting.
Yep.
Excuse me, Brian?
Who's that?
That's Bob.
Yeah, Bob, thanks.
So Sharon has the ability to speak, and I think you guys can see her message off to the side there, that it was a recommendation from the state is to vote to allow this just so that she can grant as needed. But Sharon, are you live now?
We're talking about, I want to answer your question.
Yeah. I can't do it. Nope, I can. Okay. All right, well, you step out because I don't want to be within sixteen.
I think we're doing pretty good for our first-
Sharon just came into the office. I'm going to turn the screen around.
Okay. Bob, thank you for the, I wasn't looking over in my chat, so thank you. I see it now. Hi, Sharon.
Hi, Sharon.
Sorry, you can't hear me on my computer. We tried. I, okay, I don't. That's why I raised my hand from my computer, but apparently I don't have my microphone.
Ah, no.
It took me a second to get it going, but she is active now.
Okay.
But it says my microphone's not working.
Well, we see you and we hear you now.
Yep.
I'm down in Marlene's office now.
Yeah.
What do you got for us?
I'm away in Marlene's. The idea, I, I got a lot of this from the Treasurer Collectors Association, that the idea is we're going to still, the letter will still say, if you can pay, you should pay, but that if there is a circumstance, so they cut, that's why this ruling came from the governor. It's not something I came up with, that said that we have the ability to be able to say, okay, you're in a situation. So the, what, what they're asking us to do is have you guys vote to say, I have the ability to do this, because otherwise I don't even have the, the right to say, yes, you can have an extension. And then we put, we do have to post it that we're going to allow this, and then they have the opportunity to just have thirty extra days to pay. So instead of a May first date, it'll be a June first date. Because obviously, we need revenue to come in to keep funding the town. So that will be how we, we phrase it when we put it out, because I agree with you. I already have a lot of people paying already. But a few people that do need it will have that opportunity.
I think, I think that's fair, that explanation is fair. So thank you for, for that. Well, I, 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 yeah, I, I, I'm fine, and it's a thirty-day extension. I, I guess I, I missed that part in the very beginning, so I, personally, I'm comf- I'm comfortable with that. May first to June first, it still stays within the, the budget years and cycles and things like that, so.
Exactly. So I, I had given Marlene some-
Sharon, so, um.
Yeah, it is only to June.
My question is, if, if, if a, if a resident needs that thirty-day extension, if we, if we take this vote tonight, do they automatically have that? Or do they have to call you and tell you?
Well, the way that it's set up from the governor is that they automatically have it, just the thirty days. So no one has to call us and, and we are here every day, but no one has to go through that step, because it,
Okay.
The idea was it might be embarrassing for some people to have to call and, and I need help.
Okay.
Everybody thirty days, but we're going to phrase it in our letter. And we, they first said we had to mail letters home, and that was a big concern yesterday. And they've amended it as of this morning and said you can use social media, and I'll work with Bob for the code red, and we'll also put it on the website saying, listen, please still pay if you can, but if you need it, here's your alternative. And that's what most towns are voting on, so.
Okay.
Marlene has the stuff, so I'll step back out and go back down the hall, but unless you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Bye. Sorry bothering Marlene.
That's all right. Don't bother me.
I think that's a, I think that's a
Okay.
fair way to do it.
I, I, I do too. I, I didn't realize it was the thirty, you know.
It is just thirty days, and I'm sorry, I thought I had said June.
Oh, you absolutely may have, you know. Yep. Okay.
Sorry, I'll make a motion to grant the thirty-day extension, but we do encourage people to pay if they can.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to in, instruct the Collector and Treasurer's Office to follow the state guidelines that came out from the Governor's Office, which is basically those that need it would, to extend the real estate tax due date from May first to June first. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Okay, Marlene, what else you got?
Okay, moving along. Let's see, what else do we have here? We have, our next item is a water and sewer billing commitment.
Yes. We do this every year.
That is our second bill commitment. Water is in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. So if you'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve the water bill commitment.
Yes, to approve the water commitment in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll ask the board to make a motion to commit the sewer bills in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll make a motion to accept the sewer bills in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thou-
Um, authorize that commitment.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
One eighty-four, two forty-two, and twenty-four cents. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion made. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second. If I moved it or seconded it.
Oh, I didn't know who, all right. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And lastly, a motion to authorize fees posted against water in the ma- amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
What, what is, what is that for? What is that?
I don't have the details what that fee is. It could be, uh, could be, I don't know, a turn-on. It could be a-
A correction fee maybe?
I'm sorry, Ed?
A correction. I, I see. It's a correction fee.
Oh, she said it's a connection fee.
Action fee. That's fine.
Right, yep.
So I'll make a motion, the board accept the collection, the attached twenty-twenty fees posted against the water batch to him in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, moving along, the next item. So just, just for informational, just to stay on water and sewer for a moment, the total commitment for this, this billing cycle is four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Nice.
Next item is Catherine Olson and Elizabeth Denny to the Historical Commission. Both of these ladies will be filling vacancies.
I just had one quick question. It refers to filling a vacancy and then filling one pending a resignation?
Yeah.
That seemed a little unusual to me. Do we have the resignation?
Uh, we received a resignation from Lynn O'Masta.
Okay.
Understanding is that has been received. And then the other vacancy was Charlie Kellogg.
Right, but I think-
The letter says pending resignation.
Pending, right.
As long as we have that in, then I would, I would make a motion that we appoint Catherine Olson and Elizabeth Denny to fill the vacancies left by the passing of Charles Kellogg and the resignation of Lynn O'Masta. And of course, recognize Charles' many years of service to the town and Lynn's many years of service to the town, and we thank her very much for all of that.
I'll second that, and I thank Lynn also.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next item is the proposed agricultural policy that Bob Wagner had presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
I, I have forwarded this on, this policy to Town Council for review. I have not had a conversation with Town Council yet. Usually, we will touch base, so I haven't received a response from him, so I don't believe he has reviewed that.
Okay.
But I, I just wanted to present it in, in the meantime, if, if any of you have had reviewed that and, and have any questions about it.
I, honestly, I, I did read through, but I, I, there was nothing that, that stood out to me. You know, I guess we just wait to, if we had any questions, go back through you, Marlene, or, or through Bob himself, but.
Okay. I did, I had a, I was, number three was just a little unclear to me. Because if, if a property has an agricultural preservation restriction or a conservation restriction, I'm not sure why they'd need to go, you can't hear me?
You froze for a moment.
Oh.
Now you're okay.
Okay. I, I, I just, number three, it's, it sounds like you can do something, like a, a subdivision or a building or something like that, on a property that is APR or a conservation restriction, but I, I was under the impression you couldn't do that, so why would you need planning board approval? You're really not supposed to do anything on those properties. As, as I understand the pro- the program, so that was just a little confusing to me.
Okay. I will follow up on that. So we'll continue reviewing that.
Yeah. Just, it just didn't make a lot of sense to me, the way that it was.
Does it have to do with the subdivision terminology, Diana? I mean, I, well, yeah, let's follow up with Bob.
It sort of says that, that the town will not allow the division of an APR or CR into multiple partnership, parcels or ownerships without checking, even if it's not creating a building lot. You're not supposed to build on them. That's the whole point. So I don't understand why that, what that whole paragraph is trying to accomplish.
All right. We, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely have to get clarification from Bob and, and his committee. This, this kind of goes back to a few months ago, right? I mean, it's a, a lot of the same. We, we just need clarification to make, to make sure we're all on, and I'm sure we are, but just, we want kind of hear it without the legalese of the writing and more have the conversation to find out exactly what the intent is.
I, I guess where I come from is I hold these designations sacred. So, so when I see things that make it look like there can be something happening on parcels with these kinds of designations, it makes me a little nervous.
Well, reference to a building lot defeats the whole purpose of the, the CR or the-
Right. APR.
APR.
Right.
So. All right. Uh, next item is a, a request for the Board of Selectmen to designate the Zoning Board of Appeals a special municipal employee pursuant to chapter two sixty-eight A, section seventeen C.
Mm-hmm. Is there a little background to that as to why we're?
Uh, I had received a request from a member of the, the ZBA who is interested in, in doing some business with the town. He also sits on the ZBA.
Okay.
I, I guess I'd like more information about it in specifics. I don't.
He, he provides, uh, or markets solar, solar energy. And he is interested in explorer, exploring opportunities with the town. Of course, anything that would come before the ZBA in regards to that matter, he would not be able to participate. So he would still have to, you know, file a disclosure form with the Town Clerk's Office. And periodically, the Board of Selectmen designate boards and committees special municipal employees.
It's temporary?
Uh, no, it would be permanent.
And it would be for everybody on the, on the zone.
Every, it's not just one particular, correct. It's the entire board.
We have done that in the past. I can't recall what the most recent one was.
Uh, Cemetery Commission, which is just a, a couple of months ago, a month or two ago.
Really?
Yes, the board vote, yeah, I believe it was just within the last two months, the board voted to designate the Cemetery Commission.
I, I don't remember that at all. I, I don't know, I, I don't, do we have to do this tonight? I mean, I guess it's...
You don't, no. It's not necessary that it, you take action tonight. I, I don't know a lot about this gentleman's business. But I, I know that he is on the ZBA, and of course, ZBA members receive a stipend. In, in pursuant to the State Ethics Commission statute, he is considered an employee of the town.
I mean, I hate to change the status of an entire board forever because of something like this, but I, I'd like to give it more consideration personally. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I'm fine with that. Get some clarification, Diana. You okay with that, Ed?
Yes, I'd like to get some more clarification. I did get a text from Joe, there was a little message of, because he was moderator, that's why he needed that changed, as some...
Well, he was moderator, but he was on the Cemetery Commission.
Oh, that's, okay, that's what it was.
It was when he was on the Cemetery Commission.
Yeah, right. That's a little different than a private entity.
Right, and it wasn't to do other business, so.
Right.
In, in Joe's case, it wasn't to perform or to do other business.
It's not a designation I take lightly, and so I would want to give that some thought.
I'd just like to add that, you know, I spoke with this gentleman via email. He had called me, left a message. I had advised him to contact the State Ethics Commission to get an opinion. I provided him with the documentation from the State Ethics Commission. He did speak to somebody there, and he was asked by the person at the Ethics Commission if the ZBA, if the Board of Selectmen has designated the Zoning Board of Appeals special municipal employee, and of course, many, many, many years ago, and I have not been able to locate that record, the Board of Selectmen had designated all boards and committees, and it was under Town Council's advice at the time to, to make that designation. But that was such a long time ago, so I had thought, well, we'll take a new vote to do that.
I am still muted there. Maybe if you don't mind, Marlene, we could just get whether it's some research that maybe you, you can do, and I'll go through, I've got the Mass General Law Book that, that you provide us for the cities and towns, or from Town Council, just kind of a paragraph that spells out exactly what the advantage or disadvantage or the reason for doing something like this, what, you know, who is it serving? Is it, is it serving the town as a whole? Is it serving that particular board as a whole? You know, let's just get some, I'd like some clarification. I know it's come up in the past, and I, I've researched it at the time, but for the heck of me, I cannot recall the ins and outs of it in, in whether, to Diana's point, whether we want to change something just for this particular, for one, for, for one circumstance.
Well, and I, I think that determining, I would like that information to come from the State Ethics Commission. I mean, do we necessarily have to pay Town Council to look into this? I mean, this must be something that the State, State Ethics... I mean, Ethics must have all kinds of information and directives on this that we can take a look at. I just think that it's a big decision, and I'd like more information and more time to mull that over.
Yeah, I think, I think Ethics is one thing, but I think to vote to designate somebody a special municipal employee is more of a legal type thing, not an Eth-, you know what I mean? So I, I mean, and I agree, Diana, I don't think this takes a lot of research on, on Town Council's part. I, I think it's, oh, that designation means, you know, I, I believe we can probably, I can probably just Google it after our meeting and see as well.
Well, included in your packet on page, it's a five-page document from the State Ethics Commission, and it outlines the definition of a special municipal employee.
Yeah, I have that. I haven't, I mean, it's, I, I had trouble reading it because it's such small print. So I, I guess my, I guess I'd like to just sort of table this issue. My feeling is, table it till we have a little bit more information and, and, and can give it a little bit more thought, because I do think that it's something that warrants that.
Okay.
So we will just, we'll take no action on that tonight. We'll just garner, garner some more information. Take it up.
Will do.
Alright, thanks, Marlene. And we actually, we're at your report now. I'll let you, the Billings Way property, the lease or agreement?
Uh, yes, Billings Way. So we had solicited proposals. Deadline was March 23rd. We received one response from Harrison Bardwell. And my recommendation to the board is to, to approve, to grant an agreement to license the property 2.5 plus or minus acres off Main Street in Billings Way to Harrison Bardwell through November 30th, 2020, pursuant to the proposal, the RFP.
Sorry.
No, no, I was just saying, okay.
I'll make a motion that we grant this, this license to use the property to Harrison Bardwell as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like, my, I would like to question, is there a way we can, in the future, I mean, this lease has its terms already set. Is there a way that we can enter into this agreement on a longer term?
Yes, we can.
If that's something that, you know, so we don't have to take this up every growing season, if that's something that...
And I have consulted with Town Council on that, and I will, there will be an article on the annual town meeting warrant to do that.
For this particular property?
Right, well, yes, for this particular property.
To be able to enter into longer-term agreements?
Yes.
I think that makes sense to do it that way, but for this case, I'm fine with it this way.
Why do we need an article?
I, Town Council had asked if the town had ever voted to, to lease that property for a long term. I did not find a record of the town doing that, so to cover ourselves.
I don't understand why...
Isn't the idea of, of entering into an agreement that both parties agree to whatever the term of the agreement is, right? I don't know why we need an article to do that.
Right, pursuant to procurement statute, you, you can lease property. If it's going to be greater than three years, you do need a town meeting authorization.
So maybe we do it for three years at a time, in the future.
We, we...
Keep it simple.
Well, we could do, do it just for three years.
Yeah.
I think some people were thinking, you know...
Longer term?
Longer term.
Okay, well, that's, that's...
Well...
I'm open to...
Some people might have been thinking, yeah, let, let, well, you know what, I just as soon have a conversation about that. I mean, because three-year, I, I think three years is fair, and, and we could always put like we do with employment contracts, you know, add, add an additional year at the end or something, but I, I'd rather, I'd like to have a little conversation about this, actually. I mean, yeah, well, okay, so I'm fine with obviously the one-year proposal. As far as the extension goes, I, I'd like to have a conversation with, with my fellow board members and with you, Marlene.
Okay, so in history, a little bit of history here, the town has been generally leasing the property on a yearly or a growing season.
Yeah.
Two years ago, we solic- we did one year with the option to renew for an additional year, and we did. There is interest in, in longer term.
Okay.
And, and obviously, as I just said, anything greater than three years would require town meeting authorization.
Okay.
And that, and that town meeting authorization is simply to allow a longer time period, but not particularly for a particular entity, correct?
Right, right.
So...
It would just, yeah, you could, it could be for 10 years, whatever you'd like it to be.
And then everybody, at the same process, where it's open for proposals.
Yeah.
Yes, you would still solicit proposals.
Alright. Yeah.
This, uh, this also, I think, needs to include this discussion, if we're going to talk about going to town meeting and, and enter into longer-term leases, it needs to involve the Cemetery Commissioners too, because that property, but it's their land, basically, and...
Right.
So, so that's...
Cemetery Commission oversees that.
Yeah, and, and will potentially at some point need parts of it, so we want to make sure that if we look for a longer term, that it's something the Cemetery Commission is comfortable with.
Well, and actually, Diana, that, that's kind of what I was thinking, was, was the land in the future, what's it going to be needed for, you know? So it wasn't certainly necessarily about the process, but it, you know, I just didn't know how long-term a lease made sense. That, that's why I think three years is...
Well, I can remember, I actually, when I was on the board before, I actually negotiated the purchase of this with the, there was two women that owned that property, sisters that owned that property that the town, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was a family that owned that property, and, and I can remember at the time, the Cemetery Commission feeling they, they wouldn't need that back parcel for maybe 50 years. So it's, there's, there's a lot of room there for cemetery use, but it still has to be, you know, discussed with them. Any, any length of term needs to include them in the discussion.
Yep, okay, alright, well, on the short term, on this particular agreement, did we already make the motion in the second?
There was a motion made, there was a motion made and seconded.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Woo!
I don't know if I like this for both.
And a thank you to Harrison.
Yeah, absolutely.
For farming this, keeping that farming, I love it.
Yep. Yep, we appreciate it and wish you much success, so good luck with that this year. The financial fiscal year 2019 update, Marlene?
As I, I had a, received a brief update from Melonson Heath last, the end of last week. They're continuing to review grants revolving funds, and this includes all grants and revolving funds, including the schools, grants revolving funds, cash, receivables, and, you know, there has been, it has been necessary for them to spend a significant amount of time analyzing all the, all this, all these documents, the data. And they are continuing to do the reconciling of cash and receivables with the Treasure Collector's Office. This morning, I participated in a conference call Melonson Heath had with the school superintendent and the administrative assistant regarding, regarding grants. Things are, are moving along, and as I said earlier, we're going to be prepared to have a meeting with Melonson Heath on April 21st.
Yeah, and that's our meeting with, joint meeting with the Select, with the Finance Committee as well. Okay.
Yes.
We're gonna do that this way on a, as a Zoom meeting? We're gonna have to. Right?
That's what I was expecting, but...
I, I'm pretty sure the restriction, yeah.
As was, I was thinking that that's how we'd be doing it as well.
Yeah, that's gonna be a busy screen.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have under my report.
Okay.
There are some items under continued old business.
Right. So, under continued old business, it's the fiscal year 2021 budget and the annual town meeting warrant articles and ballot questions and, and things like that, so.
So I did prepare a ballot question, and, and I reviewed it with, with the Town Council, and I had one too many ands in the last sentence, so that was the only change. This ballot question is related to the Route 5 Water and Sewer Project. And as you know, the cost of the project is 3.6 million. We received 2 million from the Mass Works Grant.
Right.
And that leaves 1.6 million, million to be funded. This is a debt exclusion override.
Okay. Did you want to read, so?
I can read it.
Just to remind people, this was the grant, the Mass Works Grant that the town had been submitting for, for actually for a number of years. And we were fortunate enough to actually be approved, accepted, and awarded the $2 million grant for that project out on Route 5, which is to extend the water and sewer. But the cost of the total project, as Marlene just said, is 1.6 million dollars, so you know, that we, we, the project as a whole is 3.6. You know, we, we got as much as we could, I guess, from the state, right, being, being awarded that grant, which is, you know, simple math, it's, it's over 50% that the state's actually going to be paying to bring much-needed water and sewer services to that area of Hatfield, so that, that's a brief overview just for residents, because it hasn't, it was back in the fall when the grant was finally awarded, so it's been a little while since we've actually spoken about this publicly, I think. Does Ed or Diana have any comments you wanted to add, or Marlene, just?
I would just add that townspeople, you know, it's good for them to know that this will allow for some business development and business expansion along that corridor, which means that some of these costs will recoup through expanding our tax base, and those businesses will also create jobs and contribute to the community in a number of ways, so it's, it's money well spent.
And as we know...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Marlene.
I was just going to add that, as we know, Stable Eltron is looking at, at developing, developing property on Route 5 as a result of this project.
Right, and we also, at one of our many meetings, public meetings, back in the summer and last spring, we had a ton of residents who live in that area that were, and I don't want to speak for any of them, but they're, they asked a lot of questions that evening, and, and the feeling I got, and I didn't hear anybody say otherwise, was they're happy to have the option, should they want to, to get onto sewer system and, and be done with, or should they need to in the future, make a change, they'll have a sewer to go to rather than a septic system, and so it, yes, it's good, it's great for business expansion and, and in increased tax base, but it's also going to help the residents that some of the, you know, depending where they live, going to help the residents as well with, with improved water and sewer services, so.
Right, right, so it's not at their detriment, and, and it, you know, to, to expand, expanding that sewer service and allowing them to hook in would then allow some of those residents to disconnect their septic systems, which are in an aquifer recharge area, and it would expand fire protection out there too with the water line, so it's, it's kind of a win-win for businesses and residents, which is not always the case with projects like that, but this one, I think, really covers all the bases.
Yeah, I would agree. Go ahead, Marlene.
Just one other thing, the design and, and survey work is just about completed. So we are looking at, at starting construction sometime later July, beginning of August.
Which is also fitting into, if I'm not mistaken, the timelines of the grant that we received. That was, the part of the whole grant process was to meet certain criteria at certain times along the process, so that they know that we're, we're doing and, and doing the things that, that we applied for the grant to, to receive the grant, so that's good to know, yeah.
And this, these delays to town meeting and, and voting would, will, will still be within the timeframes that are required by the state?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Would you like me to read the question?
That would be great, if you don't mind.
I'd be glad to. Shall the town of Hatfield be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2? Shall the town of Hatfield be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund the Route 5 Sewer and Water Infrastructure Project?
And we leave the amount off until town meeting? Is that normally what we do?
Right, so this is the ballot question, and then
Oh, sorry.
I have an article on the annual town meeting warrant that references it, it'll actually have, you know, reference the 3.6 less the 2 million.
Right, I'm sorry, I thought that was, yeah. So that's the, that's the article for Lydia, that's for the, not the article, that's the ballot question for.
Question, which the Board of Selectmen has to vote to authorize to.
Does that question ultimately, so it doesn't have a dollar amount plugged into it?
It does not.
Okay. We'll have to do plenty of outreach so people know that we're paying for less than half of this project. And then on top of that, realizing the economic gains, so. Did you need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Did you want to make that motion, Ed, or do you want me to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to state question one, shall the town have to be allowed to exempt from Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund the 5 Sewer and Water Infrastructure Project?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Do you guys have any further discussion on that question?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up now, Ed?
Okay, I just.
Ed Marlene, let's get that update.
I have two items.
I just do quick. There was, as you know, we've been discussing a bill for over $6,500 on the outside ramp. That we should not pay the full amount. We felt that it should have gone on to others. So actually, after going back and forth with the architect and we've come to a compromise, which I think is, makes sense. Out of the 6,500, we only will be entitled to pay 150931. So we pay 1509, and the remainder is up to those guys to take care. We're just covering the expense of the materials. And I think this is sort of a fair compromise with the check, so I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that we accept this.
All right, I would like to thank Ed, you, and you, Marlene, as well for, and Phil, Kyle, whoever else, if anybody's been involved with that. But thank you, that's quite a savings right there. So thank you for your efforts with that.
And with everything on this project.
With everything, yes. Okay.
It's a group effort. It's Marlene, it's Phil, it's everybody jumping in there. It's sort of like this virus stuff, everybody stepping up, all the employees, the fire chief, the police chief, and board of health. I mean, you can't say enough about everybody. It's always a teamwork. It's not one person, so I just want to remind everybody, it's teamwork.
It is.
Yeah.
But I appreciate that you represent the three of us in all of that, because
Yes.
is, has been a big project, and you've done a great job, and the light is at the end of the tunnel, and it's much appreciated.
Yeah, I concur.
And it's open, right, Marlene? I mean, I mean, the building's not open, but the ramp is completed outside.
We, yes, we are seeing improvements. Yes, it's, you know, it's going to be, the property, the exterior interior is going to look very nice once this project is done.
Let's hope we can have a nice grand opening.
Yeah, who knew, right? So, so we need, is there a motion on this, or were you just up there? We had already voted last time, did we not? Was this part of that, or is this a separate change order, or is this?
No, so when you voted on the, that last change order, it excluded the 65.
Oh, because we were waiting to see what it came in at, okay.
Right, right.
All right.
So, do you, Ed, do you want me to make a motion that we accept this new figure of 1509 for that portion of the project?
150931.
31, 150931.
31 cents.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by Diana, right, and seconded by Ed. So thank you again. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Marlene, you said you had a couple more things?
I had a couple, that was one of them. Thank you.
Okay.
So this next item Ed is very familiar with as well. Architectural EL had reached out to us the end of February. They're looking to cover additional, extended additional costs relative to construction administration. And we have all been, you know, reviewing this with Architectural EL. And actually, that extension started yesterday, I believe. So I would like approval from the Board of Selectmen to allow Architectural EL to extend construction administration services. We are looking at an additional $6,000. But we are, so it's at a rate of $100 per day for six weeks. I had asked the architect if we could just, you know, take it day by day, but we need to put a cap on it. So the 6,000 would be the cap. Is that correct, Ed?
Yes, that's correct. The cap would be like six grand. It's, in a way, it's like an additional insurance policy, because you're going to have them making sure that they document everything that's being done to the back ramp. Most of the work is the back ramp. There's a few items that they still have to make sure are completed on the project, so. And it's really, you know, with the virus thing happening, and there's been some other things that have happened that have caused delays, which is nobody's fault. We just don't have the workers coming that they had because of, and so actually, and they're giving us a reduced rate, so I don't think it's a bad thing. I'm going to move my colleagues, and I hope you approve this.
I'll second it.
Yeah, and so motion's made and seconded. On top of that, again, I would say, you know, Ed and Marlene, we and I don't mean to speak for Diana, but I do think I am, you know, we rely on all the work that you guys have been doing in the and out to sort of follow the lead as to what's fair. And with your guidance, what you think is the right thing to do for all facets of this project, so. So again, thank you. Motion's been made. Second, is there any other comment, discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I just, I'd just like to add that, you know, this is for an extra six weeks, and hopefully it won't take that long.
Right.
But, okay, that's what we're looking at.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Is any other, is there any, Marlene, is that all set with what you have?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so is there any unanticipated new business that we need to take up tonight, given the circumstances in town and what's happening? Comments, anybody? No, good.
I don't have anything.
Well, in that case.
Before I make a motion to adjourn, again, I think it's important to thank everybody for all their efforts on the situations that we have, so. And being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Awesome.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, and I agree with that. Thank you, everybody in town, and echo for the residents too. It's, yeah. We're all, we're just seeing the best of people, so thank you very much. Bob, I guess you can drop this now, if you would. I guess that's how it works.
Yep, thank you, everybody, and it was nice to see you.
Yes, take care.
All right.
Thanks, Marlene.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.